We'll call the order, the Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, August 27th, 2024. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge.
Our first item of business is the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan is absent, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First, we have items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 20th, excuse me, August 20th, 2024, and B, a call for a meeting and set Tuesday, September 10th, 2024, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do I have a motion in second? Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Please vote.
Well, sorry, Commissioners, let me try this again. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our resolutions. I know we were expecting commentary on items G and H, so perhaps we can take those separately. The rest, we could potentially vote and block if the Board desires. Motion to approve all resolutions minus G and H. Second by Friend. Please vote.
One moment, please. All right, we're going to do a voice vote on this one. I'm not sure what's going on. Again, this is Board of Equalization items, all the resolutions minus G and H. Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, that brings us to Resolution G on the agenda, Certified Assessment Corrections for 1808 South 228th Street or 228 Streets. Was there anybody who wanted to comment on this item?
I'm sorry, I'm late, gentlemen. First time I'm over 20 years, I've got to come down here. Let me turn myself home off.
Sure. Morning.
Thank you for letting me come down about this 228th Street.
Just say your name for the record.
My name is Mason Steinberg. I live on the... My name is Mason Steinberg. I live on the property. It's in my wife's name because she's younger than I am. This homestead that we have, which was three acres until the county took some road away from us, so we're only 2.96 acres now. We are in the floodway. You cannot do anything on the property that wasn't there when Omaha took over, including I had a hard time putting a fence up for some horses. And we, for some reason, somebody put that we would, she would accept, what was it, 147,000 or something like that. Yeah. And that is incorrect, being that nothing can be done periodically. People will stop and want to know if it's for sale. And we told them, "How much would you give us?" And they said, "Well, tell us about it." The minute we say you can't do anything that isn't here right now, they walk away. For years, if you look at the, at the property, you'll see that it was down a little over $100,000, then it jumped up to $180,000 this year. Someone said, "Oh, how about 147,000? That's still too much." That property can't increase in value because there's nothing you can do with it. So she would like to get it back down to around $110,000, $115,000 if you all are willing to do it. Any questions?
Thank you, sir, for coming this morning. And Dan, do you want to add any context, Mr. Clerk, on this item?
Sure. Yes, Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. So I talked to, why we're here today, I talked to Mr. Steinberg on the phone. He had requested an appointment with a referee. Now, when you, so he protested his property valuation during the month of June. And, you know, you can request an appointment with a referee, it's not required. But he never got his appointment. We looked at his form, and he had requested one, so we, you know, when that happens, okay, we're going to treat this as a clerical error on our, you know, we were processing, we made a clerical error. So then we set up an appointment with a referee coordinator to have him review this property protest. And he called Mr. Steinberg, and the value was at 181,700. The referee is recommending 147,000 for the tax year 2024 as far as some of the, and I did give a hard copy to item, well, Item G, I think either the third or fourth page kind of includes Mr. Musto's comments as to how he arrived at the recommendation of 147,000. But in, from 2019 to 2022, the property was, well, 2019, it was at 91,200. From 2020 to 2022, it was at 96,800. And 2023 is at 101,450. And then 2023 to 2024 is when it saw an increase of about $80,000. So this would be, even though the referee's recommendation today is for, you know, less than what it currently is, it'd still be about 47, $46,000 more than it was last year.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We'll go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Just to clarify, Mr. Clerk, the request from the owner, Mr. Steinberg, is what amount?
Mr., you know, I, Mr. Steinberg, I should have had that pulled up in the, and I can pull it up, but it was, it basically was to keep it flat, correct? Was it to keep it at 101,000?
That's what she would like to do if you have to increase it, put $10,000 on it.
So I can see what, go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Steinberg, I'm just trying to clarify what, what you're asking for us to do today. I believe the clerk indicated that the current valuation is 101,000. And, and did I hear you correct that you were asking for maybe an increase of 10,000?
Just because of inflation.
So that would be 111,000 is basically your request?
Okay, that's fair enough.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And from what I can see there, before the clerical mistake was corrected, the referee had it at 181,700. After a more comprehensive review and correction of what was missed, now the new recommendation is 147,000. So there was a reduction there, a good-sized reduction after the more comprehensive review and correction. So I think that's where we're at. Any other commentary? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I would just ask, you mentioned that going from 101 to 111 would be an accurate representation of just inflation and real estate, and I don't argue that. But were there any changes, improvements made in the last calendar year on your property that might be on top of that?
Absolutely none, excepting we keep the grass mowed.
Well, that's good. But you didn't put in any improvements on the land or on the...
Because we really can't, according to Omaha's law. Yeah, I think there's other people that'll discuss that with you, or maybe they already have. It's tough out there because we're in the three-mile limit of the city of Omaha. And I can remember years ago, I had been on the county planning board for 24 years, and the mayor of Elkhorn at the time wanted to stop Omaha from annexing them. Omaha gets a 10-day period at that time, and then they can close on annexing you because of the size of Elkhorn. Phil Klein and I, even though we talked to people down in Lincoln, could not get anything to stop Omaha from annexing Elkhorn, because Elkhorn, it took 30 days. I don't know if the laws still like that or not. But...
Well, in terms of these valuations, what we usually do is, we listen to you, the owner, and what you think is fair. And then we ask our experts at the assessor's office. And Mr. Goodwilly, you're representing the assessor's office here today. I think I don't see any, anybody from the referees. Do you have any information on this that you could share with us?
That I can show you? The only thing I have is what is...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor's, Register of Deeds Office. Clerk Ash just gave me kind of the backstory, the analysis from the referee. We don't really have any quarrel with that, with the, with the referee's analysis of, of the property. And I don't, you know, just getting this this morning, I really don't have the backstory, the history of how long Mr. Steinberg's property was, was at a certain point and, and what caused the, the rise. So, yeah, we're, we're, we're okay with what the referee's suggesting.
Sure. Mr. Steinberg, were you able to provide...
Could I see the report?
He's from the assessor's office, but he doesn't have any additional information. I think here's what the referee analyzed.
Because I saw a document that lists nine addresses that we fall within that for them to look at. I went by four of them in the country. I don't believe any of them are like the property we have.
That's what I was kind of getting to, the comparables.
Because of how close we are to the river, everything else, and we can't.
Right.
Seriously, we can't. Somebody told us Omaha may not even give us approval to replace part of the fence to keep the horse in.
Do you have neighbors that have a similar valuation as what you're asking for?
We have no, none.
I'm sorry?
We have none.
You don't?
Our closest neighbor, as the crow flies, would be, going west would be a little over a quarter of a mile, not quite a half mile. Going north would be a little over a half mile up to Pacific Street.
That's time.
I do have some information I can give you.
Sir, I'm going to go ahead and go to the next commissioner here, and they might have more questions for you. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Steinberg, I don't, I don't know necessarily if I have a, a very good question at this point, but you, it looks, it looks to me like you've got a chance to sit, not sit down, but there was a phone call with a referee for about an hour. What I gleaned from this report based on that phone call is that the property is, and it says that here, according to Mr. Musto and his letter, that the property is completely within the designed or designated floodway of the Elkhorn River. And no such new building, no, no building would be allowed if something were to occur. We've already established that, and, and it was, and it's verified here in, in this note. There's additional risk present, and that is if the property's damaged over 50%, you couldn't rebuild anything. So I guess my thing is, we're put in a weird spot here. And I would say the weird spot is this, the recommendation that the land remained unchanged at 75,200, and then because of depreciation, physical depreciation, everything else, then now we're at 147,000. I, it's very, very difficult for me to sit here and go, "This doesn't make any sense," but I'm saying it doesn't make any sense. Why the increase? You're sitting in a floodplain, you can't do any, if somebody walked in and tried to hand you a check for this property and the building on it, just asking your opinion, what do you think you'd get for it? Say, "Give me cash right now. How much will you get for all of this if you wanted to get out from under it?"
Linda said if somebody give her 110,000, next day we're leaving to go back down to Texas where she's from.
The, the difficulty I have with this is, I feel like we need to get it off our plate, but I'm having trouble understanding the 147,000 as well, and I don't have enough data to indicate that that's correct. I trust, I guess, the experience and the understanding of Mr. Musto, but I, I don't know what to do with it. I mean, if, if we dropped it to 110, what type of logic are we using at that point? If this board says, "Well, we're going to, I guess we are the arbiters, we could do that," but, more I open my mouth and the more I talk, the more confusing this gets, confusing this gets for me. So I want to listen to other folks on this board, and anybody else that might have, have some input from the assessor's office or anywhere else. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgeson?
Yeah, I was kind of on the same wavelength as Commissioner Friend, reading the comments of our referee that looked at this. And I'm still a little bit perplexed as well at the amount. And again, because you were turned down once when you wanted to do something to the home, and then it does say that you can't add any new buildings because of being where you are in the floodplain. And then, again, if, if you were in the situation where 50% of your property would be damaged, they would definitely not be able to allow you to repair or rebuild. So I don't see how an increase in value with that surrounding the, the issues surrounding the property and home. So I have no problem with moving it to the 111,450. And I'd make that motion.
Motion by Borgeson, second by Boyle, to move it to 111, 500?
450.
450, okay. 111,450. So the motion on table, it's been seconded. Commissioner Boyle?
I was just going to make similar points, that this is a home that can only depreciate and never appreciate. So we really shouldn't be putting a lot of value on the home portion of, of the property itself. So for that reason, I was going to make the same motion that we, we, it's, it's very kind of you actually to give, give an increase, because like I said, this isn't a property that's ever going to appreciate, it sounds like. So the fact that you're at least willing to, to say, increase it to 111, I think is, is kind as a taxpayer. But at, at the same time, I, I agree that this is definitely something that is not fair in other ways because of the restrictions you're put, that are put upon you because of the nature of the property and other laws surrounding it. So, so I agree with that motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Mr. Steinberg, I just want to thank you for coming down, taking time to bring this to our attention. Sitting as a Board of Equalization, we try to make the right decision here on people's property, but there are so many properties that unless you bring it to our attention, it's difficult for us to make those adjustments. So I appreciate you taking the time, and I think you make a good case, and I've been supportive of your position.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comment on this item? There is a motion on table. So if no further discussion, we'll vote on that motion.
Motion passes six to zero. And Mr. Steinberg, I'll communicate with you later today, but you'll get a notice in the mail that your 2024 value's been set at 111,450.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. And Linda wanted me to bring you all a copy of a letter to the governor, because she's been working a little with him on real estate taxing in Nebraska. I have copies that I will give this gentleman here to give to you all to read. And she appreciates very much the, what you've done. And one time I lived in Chicago for a year, driving from where I live, coming down here, took one hour today. It reminded me of Chicago.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. She certainly appreciates it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That completes Item G. We'll now go to Item H, which is a protest of Form 425 decision on 23101 West Dodge Road. Is there a commentary on this item?
This is Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. I may not need to, maybe a little redundant because I think the agenda request form kind of explains the background, but I still want to give some background before I turn it over to Kelly Armstrong. So Kelly, fortunately, one of her properties was the ones that was damaged by the tornado on April 26. She filed a Form 425. She did get a reduction in value, but it was, basically got lower to just the land value. It was, prior, the land value was at 87,000. It got reduced to 74,000. And obviously, there was a further reduction because there was a building there that got reduced to zero. And I apologize, I don't have the exact figure in front of me, but she submitted a protest arguing that the land value should be even less. And a lot of it, I asked Chair Garcia if we can have these two items kind of back-to-back because they're kind of similar situations where she was requesting, a big reason why she was requesting a lower value is because of where the property is located, and the city won't allow her to rebuild. The referee is, I haven't actually talked to her, I, I think the referee generally agreed with her. He's recommending a land value of 18,000. But Kelly still wanted the opportunity to address the board, so I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelly Armstrong, 23101 West Dodge Road. I am basically here protesting any valuation on the property other than zero, mostly because I, I lost everything in the tornado. And we're not allowed to rebuild, we're not allowed to repair. We've been devastated and lost everything, and now we're told that the new value of 18,000 is based on an ag value and what the land should be worth if we were to sell it for land, for ag land. We're not able to do that because of the new regulations that Omaha put in place, being in the ETJ, because automatically if you're under five acres, you can't be zoned ag anymore. So we have to stay rural residential. So some of the restrictions and regulations that have been placed on us won't allow us to do anything with the land. It has absolutely zero market value at this point. It's a blighted property. And we have underground septic tank, we have underground propane tank, we have wellheads from our case well, foundations that are left over from the destruction of the tornado, trees that are still in need of repair. And for us to try to justify paying anything on a property for taxes that we literally cannot do a thing with, it's nothing but a liability to us at this point. And we still have people encroaching on the property, trying to loot what little things we, we have dug out of debris piles. And so, you know, we asked that if we can't rebuild, at least let us repair the one barn that we have left. That will not be allowed. We can't do anything with the property. And so that leaves it at a zero value and just a liability for us. So at this point, what I'm requesting is that we have a zero tax value, because if we don't have any value to gain from the property and we don't have quiet enjoyment of our own property, we've been told we can't stay there, that the property is uninhabitable. We can't, we did have a fifth-wheel camper there, and we were told that we can't leave that there to, you know, stay on our property. We had a permanent, permanently attached fifth wheel as a guest quarters on the property for our grandkids and family to come out. And we're not going to be allowed to leave that there either. So that's basically my, my value of the property being zero. And as the gentleman that spoke just before me, I find it very hard to leave my neighbors in a position where they have a blighted property right next door to them. As we all know, if we're not allowed to repair properties and keep them looking nice, we end up with another situation like what y'all have had in Kings Lake. And we don't want to see that happen right now. If you go up and down our roads, we have a lot of acreage homeowners that are elderly that can't do any repair or replace their buildings because of the restrictions in the ETJ. And I just think that if we're going to have those kind of restrictions, that we can't even vote with the city of Omaha, that we shouldn't be regulated by the city of Omaha. If they want to regulate us, then go ahead and annex us. Give us the benefit of being annexed. I've sat in budget meetings with, you know, that you guys have had to go through before. And I know there's a fair amount of our tax dollars in Western Douglas County that go to the city of Omaha. And I just think if they want to regulate us, then give us the opportunity to vote on those things and annex us. Thank you very much for your consideration today.
Yeah, thank you for being here, and sorry to hear about everything you've been through this year. We're going to go ahead and go to Commissioner Borgeson.
You bring up good points in terms of what, so what will you do with this property? I mean, to me, I, I have no problem putting it at zero. If you can't do absolutely nothing, what are you to do? And by the way, I don't like the three-mile zoning law either. It should have been gone a long time ago. But what, what will, I mean, other than clear it off and do nothing?
That's a good question that I'm still trying to answer at this point, because it's not marketable. I've had a real estate agent out there, I've had FEMA representatives. You know, we were willing to bring the property up to floodway standards, putting a house on piers to rebuild. We got bids for all of that. I was willing to even construct a berm around the property. Riverside Lakes was conveniently excluded from the floodway, even though they do not have a Corps of Engineers levy. And I think that that is an injustice. even though they do not have a Corps of Engineers levy. And I think that that is an injustice.
Well, again, I, I, I just have no idea what you would do with it. And again, this is just going to be for, you know, a particular point in time. And I think if it goes to zero, it gives you a chance to figure out what to do. Because again, if you're being told you can't do anything, then I don't see how there is any value to it. But what you do with it is, I guess, a whole nother conversation or, or issue. But I have no problem with putting it at zero for a year to figure out what the heck you can do with it.
Thank you very much.
We'll go to Commissioner Boyle.
You said that you, just curious, you stated you had a real estate agent come and talk to them about it. What, what did they say?
They said, really, at this point, even to try to change the zoning, we can't because of the restrictions, the regulations that are new that Omaha put in, which coincidentally, none of us landowners had an opportunity to speak to before that happened. We can't try to rezone it. We don't qualify. It's automatically disqualified for ag because of being less than five acres. We're stuck in the rural residential zone. And that leaves us with nothing because we can't market it based on that. Nobody can build a home on it. We've offered, you know, to bring it up to flood code. There are homes that are built right along the Mississippi River that are built on piers. And we've offered to build, you know, we could haul dirt in and build the property up. The other thing that I asked for is I'd like to see an elevation study. Because the previous elevation studies that were on file from 2005 flood zoning actually showed the spot where our house is being within an acceptable level. And so, until we get a lot of those questions answered, and I'm not the only one that this is happening to, many of my neighbors in that same area who, we all had, you know, homes that people wanted to retire in and have the grandkids come to, are stuck now, not being able to even put up a horse fence or make basic repairs to properties.
And I just have another, another question, actually, for Mr. Goodwillie, who's next to you there. Mike, do you mind coming up? I'm just curious, does, do properties in floodplains, do they typically get taxed? I see, I see our, the issue here being a, a pre, the end result of what is happening to Mr. Steinberg. You know, as soon as his property's not livable, he'll have this, this land in a floodplain that he's being taxed on. Is it typical to tax, or do we run into this, or is it a result of the law the City of Omaha has now, or?
You know, we, we, we try and take into account sort of the conditions that surround that particular property. I chatted with one of my, our appraisers the other day. He said, yeah, we try and take that floodplain business into account, but this is sort of an extreme situation where, you know, I mean, I mean, you're assuming that, yes, there are some, some limitations on what can happen if you're in a floodplain. But I don't know that you anticipate absolutely nothing being able to.
Nothing can be done.
Yeah, even with some of the suggestions, you know, the property owner here has suggested, you would think, well, it's got to have some utility somehow.
Sure.
So I, I guess when we try and, when we try and value properties on floodplains, it's, you know, what was the ad for the spaghetti sauce with the oregano and the garlic? And it was all in there? We try and take that into account. So it's, it's sort of deflated compared to what somebody might be across the way that's not in the floodplain. But this is, this is really extreme.
Okay. Well, then I would like to make a motion that we decrease the valuation. Oh, you made the motion, I'll second it.
Motion by Borgeson, second by Boyle, to take the value down to zero. Any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Again, is it taking the value down to what it currently sits at, or is it taking it below what the current value is?
Dan Ash County Clerk could be lower. It's currently at 74,000, $74,700 is the current value. Well, and, and the recommendation today, like, let's just say Commissioner Borgeson never made her motion, the recommendation before you was $18,000.
Yeah, that's what I thought I saw. So ma'am, what are you requesting as far as evaluation today?
I'm requesting a zero value until we can work with the City of Omaha to either rezone the property and be able to market it accordingly for some type of ag use or commercial use. We just don't know what our options are at this point. We're left with nothing but a liability.
What do you use the property for now?
Clean up.
I'm sorry?
Clean up.
I'm sorry, what does that mean?
We're cleaning up, we're still cleaning up tornado debris four months later.
Okay, there's no structure, nobody lives there?
There is leftovers of a barn and a camper, fifth wheel camper that we had on the property that was rolled into that barn that we are trying to get removed from the property. But we're having difficulty getting it removed because of the amount of damage.
So there's no, no one living there?
No, there's no usable.
Okay. And there's no, there's no crop being grown, there's no agricultural?
No, it's not able to be used for that because of all of the existing foundations. We had concrete foundations from huge barn, greenery. We, we lost six buildings. And most of our three acres is either occupied by what's left of those foundations, debris piles, dumpsters, or areas where there's either a septic tank or a buried propane tank or a wellhead.
And did this happen all at once?
Yes.
Okay. And I think we had a process where you could file for that, and you did?
Yes.
And you were denied?
No, they, they brought it down to the 74, what was it?
To 18?
74, seven. And then they proposed bringing it to 18.
Okay. But you're saying it's wasteland?
Right.
Okay.
Right now, I'd honestly be better off just to walk away from it and leave all the trash there.
And how much wasteland are we talking about?
It's a little over three acres usable land and then roughly about, you know, a quarter acre of driveway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the table to take the, the land value recommendation down to zero, which would match the building value of zero. If no, oh, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
To finalize this, when landowners filed for the tornado disaster exemption, those were exemptions that would have put the value of their properties at zero. Is that correct?
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk, I mean, there were, there were, I don't have the exact number, but I would, willing to say the majority of them got their building value down to zero because their, their, you know, the building was destroyed, but the land value, a lot of, a lot of them saw some sort of reduction, but I don't think we had any that were reduced to zero.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we possibly had more commentators on item H. So after we complete the vote on the motion, we can still take a few more comments on item H. So go ahead and vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. That motion passes. Was there any final comments from, I think, neighbors that maybe wanted to comment? Or? Yes, please go ahead and do so.
So my name is Dennis Pitzel and I live at 1415 South 240th Street. So I, again, was hit by the tornado. In my case, my house wasn't lost. So I got some substantial damage, but it's repairable. Did not exceed the 51%. But what we're running into is the fear of Omaha. So I went down and asked the permit issue. And what they're telling me is now they keep changing the rules in our area as we go along. So they keep raising the valuations of our properties. Mine is quite high. And they, they, they keep doing that, but then they keep changing the rules that, for what we're allowed to do on our property. And in my case, I was all agricultural, had, I lost eight buildings, 250 trees. And we're trying to, right now, rebuild. I go down to the City of Omaha and they say you have to get a certified stamped engineered drawing of the buildings you want to rebuild. Okay. Well, come to find out, that's $30,000 cost to get those certified stamps with no guarantee from the City of Omaha whether we're going to get to rebuild or not. They didn't say we're going to get the permit. They said before we can ask, we have to have this. That's part of it. The other part of it is, we don't have anyone. I mean, I appreciate coming here. But we have nobody within the City of Omaha to go to to say, help. We have nothing. We don't get to vote for it. We don't get to ask. We get nothing. Matter of fact, called the city, you know, I called the mayor's office, never get a call back. I called Bacon's office, never get a call back. I called Senator Ricketts. At least they called back and they're willing to listen. But then that's taking it up to the flood level issue. Because in 2019, we all got hit with a biblical flood. I mean, it was biblical. And we're all still here. My house, every building is still there, was still there. And they're not, they fought us then. They fought like you wouldn't believe. And it's like, for what reason are you fighting us? All we got to do is put our houses back together. And they, and they keep fighting us on this. And for what, what is the end goal? Well, we've heard it from some people within the city planning. Their goal is to turn that whole valley into nothing but a bunch of west shores, lakes and developments. Because that's where the real tax dollars are. The real tax dollars don't come from us, our acreages. They come from the west shores. So the minute we're gone, all they're going to do is dig it all up, raise the elevations, and they're going to turn it into lakes, lakefront properties. That's their ultimate goal. And who's behind that goal? What's the purpose? Because we've been, I've been there now 31 years. I had no plans on leaving anywhere. I was not going anywhere. My goal was to, when I die, spread my ashes out in my yard and let my children have my house. But that isn't going to happen if we don't do something about City of Omaha. They can't continue to have this power over this buffer zone that they call. In the state of Texas, they, they got rid of it. They allow people in the state of Texas to have the choice of being within the, the buffer zone. Do you want the services? Because City of Omaha does nothing for us. They don't, they, they do nothing. So it, it, it doesn't make any sense to be in the City of Omaha's jurisdiction when they're not doing anything to, to be a part of us. They don't allow us to vote. They don't answer our questions. They don't let us sit on a board. Nothing. And that's what, I'm, I'm asking you. You're the county. In my opinion, you go state, county, city. You should have power over the City of Omaha. You should have ultimate say so over the City of Omaha. And then the state should have ultimate say so over you. It shouldn't be any different than that. But in this case, City of Omaha dictates to the state, to the city, to everybody. We got people on that city planning board that answer to no one.
Thank you, sir. I do have to wrap you up, but stay up here because there might be a question for you.
Please.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Dennis, I don't know how relevant this, well, I think it's relevant. How, do you, how are you and your neighbors insuring the home and the property? So the, the reason I ask the question, is it a, is it a private sector, will, will a private sector insurance company even touch this with a, with a 50-foot pole? Or do you have to insure it through the state?
No, I, I insure, I have flood insurance through FEMA, through, you know, your regulated flood, flood insurance. And then I have my own homeowner's insurance. I did have my business on my property, so I have my business insurance. You know, so I am insured.
But, but the bottom line is, you, you end up getting a check from the insurance, you know, the insurance, the insurance provider. And then there are bureaucrat, there's bureaucracy that essentially says, we don't care what type of check you had. You're not making, if it's over 50%, you're not making these enhancements. You can't.
If it was over, if my house would have been damaged over 50%, I would have been out. Forty-nine, forty-eight, forty-seven, whatever the insurance company deemed as damaged. They would have paid me for that. And thank God it wasn't. But I'd have been out the remainder.
Right. So my final question is, when an insurance company hands you a check, either public or privately funded insurance companies hand you a check, they want receipts back to show what type of value add that they've gotten after they handed you the check?
That is correct.
So what are they asking for now? Are you, are you telling them, look, I just took a check from you and there's nothing I can do, so I just deposit the money and sorry, I don't have an invoice? I, I'm just curious.
We're at that point right now because they are questioning me. So you bring up a, you're bringing up a subject that is occurring at this point in time, in that the insurance company wants to know where I'm using those funds. And I do have a mortgage on my property. And my mortgage company is saying, when are you going to put your property back to what we gave you money for in your loan? In other words, I'm at this, I'm at this dilemma. Believe it or not, I would have never thought that having a tornado would make a full-time job. But I own a company and I spend more time dealing with the issues of the City of Omaha and the issues with insurance and the issues with everything else that has nothing to do with my business. It's a full-time job dealing with the problems of every day trying to rebuild my property.
Well, and by the way, you probably already know this, but the reason those insurance companies are doing that is because if there's, if they continue to insure that property, they're going to want to make sure that if there's another disaster, that it's not from a previous disaster. And they're going, well, look, did you get this rectified?
Yeah.
You're essentially saying, I can't rectify it.
I told my agent, I said, unless there's a meteor, I think there's less chance of anything actually damaging my property now. Because the dam that flooded us is gone, the wood, the trees are gone, there's no going to be forest fire. You know, there's nothing there to damage, you know, from the standpoint of natural disasters. Although, we did have the 95 mile an hour winds and I had a service trailer on mine, it blew that over. You know, so I ended up having to start a whole nother insurance claim because I got to start over with my camper that's sitting on my property I'm living in got damaged and everything else. So, you know, Mother Nature's been quite rough on us this year.
No more comments.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. Sir, thank you for being here. All right. Anything else on item H before we move forward? If not, we'll conclude by requesting a motion to adjourn for Board of Equalization. Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll now commence our Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Morgan is absent, Commissioner Rogers, Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business is Section 1A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, and B being the approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. Do we have a motion in second? Motion by Rogers, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. The motion is second for discussion. Removal of H, item G, to be considered separately. Okay? Seconded by Boyle and discussion. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
But not H, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Item H, although it doesn't explicitly say so, I believe is a 30-plus million-dollar proposal. proposal, which I've opposed, to expand the jail, uh, to allow for incarceration of mentally ill people in a segregated unit. The amount and cost of this construction, uh, is not in the documents that I can see. There have been no hearings of the appropriate committees of jurisdiction on this. And the problematic jail expansion using what is proposed to be ARPA funds, um, is prohibited by ARPA, is not authorized by ARPA, and subjects us to potential clawback of all of that money by the federal government. In addition, the recent special session of the legislature established a, a state cap on our, um, taxing and budget authority, um, so that we will have probably fewer resources than we have had today, although we haven't received any estimate of what that legislative action and LB2 and other, other initiatives will be in terms of dollar, uh, amount. Some services were exempt, and in conversations with some of my colleagues, the idea would be that this would be exempt under the inmate detention, um, exemption, um, under statutory authority in 13320. That just makes us more prone to, uh, clearly violating the, um, ARPA Act's prohibition against expansion of inmate detention or jail facilities. This is not a service that is mandated by the state, so we're expanding a non-mandated service in light of a budget constraint with serious questions about the, uh, authority to use ARPA funds to even do this in the first place. On top of that, the inmates' stay in the Douglas County Corrections Center is limited and will definitely not be sufficient to help address anybody's long-term mental health issues, so the benefits will be limited as well. So with the risks of, of the state cap, which we don't have an estimate of, to expand a non-mandated service that is not authorized by ARPA, um, and has no cost estimate in the documents before us today, although it's in excess of $30 million, faces us with a bigger risk than the kids' jail fiasco that we're currently dealing with of
Thirty seconds.
$27 million in operating costs ongoing, a property tax increase, a vacant, empty building, and not one kid helped. This shouldn't be on the consent agenda. In the legislature, nothing makes the consent agenda if there's a single vote against it. I voted against this from the outset. This should have a full and fair public, public hearing. It's a massive, uh, extension of our obligation, and we're not in a position at this point to say how we're gonna meet that, uh, going forward. I've heard estimates of a million dollars a year or more from the, um, corrections people. I vigorously oppose this. Without Commissioner Morgan here today and others who would like to come forward and inform me they're not available today, I'd ask that we lay this over, uh, for consideration in, uh, September.
Thank you. Also, on H, just a quick typo clarification, both the agenda and the actual resolution say "Construction Manager at Risk." It's actually just the construction, construction company itself that's being chosen for the project because we already approved the CM at Risk in our previous resolution. So that is a, uh, typo slash error that, uh, we can correct. With that, I'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we need an amendment right now to correct that, uh, language?
You probably should.
I'd like to make a motion to, I, I'd like to speak to this, but I'd like to make an emotion to correct that language. It should not say "Construction Manager at Risk." It should say "McCarthy Building Companies adds, adds Construction Company," correct?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Second that.
Motion by Friend, seconded by Boyle to correct the error just mentioned by Commissioner Friend.
Okay. Can I continue, Mr. Chair?
Let's start on that amendment first, and then we'll continue.
All right.
Give me one moment, please.
Something additional? Is it related to the motion, Patrick?
Yes, it is. Somebody pointed out to me that that was an error, that it wasn't the Construction Manager at Risk, but I just talked to our public property director. Can you, can you clarify what, what we're actually considering?
Uh, it's a contract for the Construction Manager at Risk, which is McCarthy Companies.
Sorry, that, uh... Somebody pointed out to me what they thought was a mistake, and it turns out now that our public property director here is, it was not a mistake, so you don't need the, you don't need the motion. So our apologies.
All right. I, I'd like to withdraw my, uh, motion then.
All right. Commissioner Friend, I'll let you finish your round, and maybe stay close, Jeff.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, setting that slight confusion aside, um, here, here's what's not confusing. We have been dealing with this for quite a while, and the directive that we were essentially given, uh, over a period of time, the direction that, that this county board was given and that taxpayers in Douglas County, the direction that they've been given based on the representation that we're providing, is essentially that the county needed to provide or prepare detailed written justification of a capital expenditure of this nature. We needed to go through, describe the harm or the need to be addressed. I believe that we've done that. We also had to explain why a capital expenditure like this is appropriate, uh, in a lot of different ways, in different public forums. I think we've done that, on at least three different occasions. And I'm gonna be repeating myself if anybody hadn't heard it before, but I'm gonna say some of this stuff again. We also had to compare the proposed capital project against at least two alternative capital expenditures and demonstrate why the proposed capital expenditure under these circumstances is superior. This board determined this one to be superior. Now, from a ideological, philosophical, and a practical standpoint, all three, what you could say is that we're making a mistake. You, you could say that, that this money is going in a direction that it shouldn't go. What you can't say is that all of these criteria legally have not been met. They have. Here's another thing that you can say, and I've said it before, and you guys are tired of hearing about it. At one point, the federal government, again, in its infinite wisdom, during a pandemic, which was real, an awful lot of people lost their lives during that pandemic, and there were, there were things that were done during that pandemic, either right or wrong, were done for the public health, the good of the public. We understand that now. There were mistakes made, but there were some good things that actually happened. There were some understanding that was derived, and, uh, all kinds of things occurred during that two-year period. Here's one thing that occurred that we can't, we cannot rewind. Whether it was justified or not, the federal government, in its infinite wisdom, said here, under this circumstance, you, these local governmental subdivisions, here's $55 million, free money. We have nothing more to do but to spend it. We can't do anything else. We can't, by the way, if we don't spend it, that guaranteed they claw it back. And then it's gonna go to Dearborn, or it's gonna go to Detroit, or it's gonna go to Atlanta, it's gonna go to Texas, it's gonna go wherever. So the government, in its infinite wisdom, said, "ARPA, $1.2 trillion nationwide." A heavy portion of that money, arguably, was free money. Free. For governmental subdivisions to spend, meaning that if it wasn't applied to an infrastructure enhancement, if it wasn't applied to buildings, if it wasn't applied to roads, if it wasn't applied to some other type of infrastructure thing, there is little or no gross domestic product. That means it was free, that means period, it was free money. A portion of that 1.2 million, no gross domestic product. You know what that results in? You do not have to be an economist to understand. We're seeing it right now. That type of federal government and treasury fiscal behavior breeds inflation and then ultimately could breed recession.
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds. We've seen inflation. We're going to see recession, because that money's still out there and it's free. I'm not done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend. We'll go to Commissioner Borgeson.
This, this project, um, actually is a long time coming. We have struggled for, uh, years and years, ever since, uh, 2004, when behavioral health reform started and the state was shutting down its regional centers, and we were sending messages not to do that because they were gonna end up in our county jails, um, because of us researching what had happened on the east and west coast when they did the same thing the state of Nebraska was recommending they do. And what happened was, they closed them down, and now we're sitting with a 50.1% or 51% of our incarcerated folks having a mental illness within the jail, um, system. This new building, this new mental health facility for those that are incarcerated is the absolute right thing to do because no one, no one should have to go to jail in order to get their mental health services. Unfortunately, because of the breakdown of our behavioral health system and services, that's where they are. And we struggled for many years determining whether to bring in services, not to bring in services, and then when we brought them in, a few years later, it was needing to expand those services because we kept seeing more and more and more people with mental illness, um, walk through our doors. So instead of an individual being treated in a jail cell, they will be treated in a mental health facility, um, yes, on that campus, um, but with much more dignity and, um, respect for their illness, which is what we should be doing. So, um, I support this, um, this resolution so that we can move forward.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Final point. If you go through and you try to figure out exactly what the attorneys at Deloitte and everybody else told us, and if you go through that and you, and you break it down even, even more, what, the conclusion you come to is, and I, again, I've said this before too, Douglas County Corrections is the largest mental, per capita, the largest mental healthcare center in this state. And the issue, the issue and the concern is growing. So that leads to the first summary that we've been given by the legal eagles. Describe their harm or the need that needs to be addressed. 50% of the people at DC, DC have a verifiable mental health issue. A portion of those people need a certain type of clinical care that they're not getting right now. Clinical care when they walk in the door. It's at best haphazard. They're all over the place. It's hard to identify. Once you identify it, there's no place for them to go. It's not a clinical environment. So that's, describing the harm or the need, that's it. That's why we're doing this. Second thing is, explain why a capital expenditure like this is important, because it's the largest healthcare center in the state. The state abdicated this authority a long time ago. There are no facilities around the state that deal with this population, especially lockdown facilities. And the reason, finally, that this infrastructure is important to gross domestic product is, it's threefold. It puts people to work. You're actually going to functionally put people to work. The second thing is, is there's actually gonna be a purchase of, there's going to be a purchase of materials. That's gross domestic product. Doesn't matter who's buying it, that ends up being gross domestic products. It's not GNP, it's GDP. We're purchasing materials in this community or outside of Nebraska to actually get this stuff done. The final piece is that there is no way, absolutely no way, that if we did, if we did not do this, there's no way that our community can, from this particular standpoint, from a correction standpoint, can suck that up, can deal with it. Wha, what are you gonna do? This is probably a little bit rhetorical. What are you gonna do? Are you gonna go to UNMC and say, "You have to do it"? Are you gonna go to Community Alliance and say, "No, you have to do it"? Are you gonna go to Boys Town? Are you gonna go to Radius? Are you gonna tell all these people that they have to do it? Is the state gonna do that? Are the feds gonna do that? If they do, there's gonna have to be some money behind it, right? Look, we've been down this road for two years. We're not bonding this. We're not asking the county taxpayer to pay for it. We were put in a situation where we got a bunch of free money, and they're saying, "Do what you have to do that's best, that best fits the problem that you have." This best fits the problem that we have. I'd, uh, by the way, this is tax money too. This ARPA money is tax money. It came from our income taxes, it came from us, it came from people in Kansas, Missouri, everywhere else. We have to spend it wisely. I think we're spending it wisely. Now, somebody wants to combat that thought process, knock yourself out. This debate, I enjoy. What I'm saying is, I wanna be really, really responsible.
Ten seconds.
Thank you. I wanna be really, really responsible with people's tax money. This is a responsible approach. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
I, I couldn't agree more with, with my, my colleagues who, who bring up the importance of this. I think that the point we continue to make is that over half of the inmates at the Corrections Center have a mental health diagnosis or disorder. That's, that is the large, we are the largest healthcare provider of mental health services in the state, and that cannot be ignored. And it's by, it's, it's not like we are a facility with, with our name on the front saying we're here to treat mental health. It's who, it's who, who, the folks that are brought to us that we're, uh, trying to deal with. I think for that reason, and for a lot of other reasons, treating mental health in Corrections is the right thing to do. If you look at it from even a taxpayer's standpoint, uh, by doing that, if you can get folks on their, get them the treatment they need, you can decrease recidivism. So if we see, don't see them as often at the jail, that means we decrease costs to the, to Douglas County taxpayers as a result. So, plus, it's, it's just the right thing to do for, for those people who need help. It's, it's really a hard sell to say that that is a mental health facility, but it really, it really is with, with the types of, of folks that are incarcerated. What's also challenging is that the staff there are currently not, they're, they're trained really well, but they're not specifically trained in mental health disorders like folks are in a mental health facility. So if we can give folks the training they need to do that, the corrections officers, I think we'll find that there will be less turnover because of the stress of the job, fewer work injuries, uh, the mental health of the officers themselves would be, would improve as well. So I think it's important to also remember that some of the folks, whether we like it or not, in, in the Corrections Center are dangerously mentally ill. Those people have to stay there for various reasons, uh, but there are, there's a good number of people who are not. And I think our, our duty as a board, um, as Douglas County, uh, we are the providers of last resort, and it's our obligation, it's what we have to do, just as, as a decent society to take care of people who need our help the most. So I support the direction that we've taken to do this. When we got the ARPA money, our, we decided that the funding was gonna try, we were gonna do our best to help the mentally ill in our community, and this is an example of, of copulation that no one else wants to care for. So I think it's a really appropriate use of those funds. But again, I appreciate the other fiscal arguments made by my colleagues, and again, in my opinion, it's simply the right thing to do.
Thank you. Additional comments on this item?
We are on item G only, is that right?
Uh, item H.
What happened to item G?
We're gonna take it separately next.
It sounds like you're kinda talking about it anyway. Since you pulled something, does that open the agenda up for any discussion?
Uh, right now, we're on consent- Right now, we're on consent agenda in general, except for G. We're not talking about G yet.
You are gonna talk about G.
We will, yep. Comments on H or anything on consent agenda minus G?
And actually, I'm not sure if it's, well, there we go.
And we keep them there as long as it took to get them back on their feet. Sometimes six months, sometimes six weeks, sometimes six years, and some people were forever. You're running a jail, it's gonna have people there for sixty days, ninety days. And that's not what Congress wanted to address in ARPA. You're going on ARPA. I don't care what the law says. I don't care what any other attorney in Omaha says. I'm going to tell you what the most assertive, protective county money association says. A court of the back, in the forest, the National Association of Counties has addressed this. Sauer they addressed it once again on August 12th, 2024, on something called myth versus fact. About eight areas, only one of them, today. Is myth. State local fiscal recovery funds were used to build jails and stadiums, which is improper use, is an improper use of the funds.
Ten seconds. Thank you, Mr. Fogarty. That's time. Appreciate it. We're gonna go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Mr. Chairman, I was just raising a point.
Okay.
They get an additional two minutes if they speak again?
No, they get four minutes for one round.
One time?
Yep.
Okay.
On each item that they're speaking on.
Okay. Was there a document that you submitted with the point that you were?
You can tell the other.
Okay, the point is that ARPA doesn't allow for jail expansion?
No, no.
That's the point.
That's the point. And there is a little loophole that doesn't
That's fine.
save this project at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Thank you. Now, I know that you can extend his time if you wish, and you people can vote for him to do that. But my comments will come more in line with item H after all because it has to do with most of what words came out of your mouths this morning. And I'd like to remind you that this is a compound constitutional republic. It's not a democracy. It's system federalism in that the federal government is separate from you, local, state, and local. They never intended for the federal power to come in and usurp your powers. Yet you are crying every day about the loss of local control. Well, you took local control from us, from we the people. ARPA might, the word is clawback. Mr. Fogarty, I think his name is, has brought that term up a number of times. They might come back and tell you they want their money back. But folks, you should have refused it. You did not have to take that money. They have no power to do that. It's not in the Constitution. They usurped state power. You took the money. You shouldn't have. I want to submit two documents. I'm not gonna read them all, but I also sent them by email. One has to do with, oh, the National Association of Counties. And there's a picture of Ms. Borgson when she was, I believe, chairman. There's a nice, a Nebraska Association of Counties. There's a federal association of everything and a state and a local. And these people, you're listening to them and you're following a lot of their recommendations because they know about things. But we don't, so you never ask us. Yet you want to get up there and crybaby about the federal government throwing this at you and making you do it. No, they don't. They don't make you do it. We want the power back and I hope to hell this election gives the power back to the people. Because if it doesn't, you will see a nationwide place for mass recalls.
Thank you, Larry. Other comments on consent agenda, including H?
Hello, Commissioners. My name's Sean Kelly, 5212 Underwood Avenue. I have a few concerns about this proposal. Obviously, the first one being legal professionals have raised some concerns. I know Commissioner Friend said that's nothing to be concerned about, but obviously, Mr. Fogarty and others in the area have raised some concerns. I do think that mental health is important. Are there other areas we can utilize the existing Juvenile Justice Center that was built that's brand new? It's vacant and unused. Could we use that for this purpose? The next point is that acute care, it would be provided at this facility. Is there other options to invest in more inpatient facilities for long-term care? And then the last is simply just, there's budgetary constraints coming down the pipeline from the state legislature and this would provide additional expenses moving forward. Those are my concerns with this facility.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
I'll take a round just to mention that the notion of taking an adult corrections mental health facility into the downtown youth detention facility is not a legally allowed use because the bond that was set up for the youth detention facility forces us to use it for the original purpose or a related purpose to youth detention and juvenile justice. That, those are the legal parameters around the bond. And even a slight change in that to a related use still has to go through approval of this board again, city council, and the public building commission. So we can't just throw whatever we want in there. On top of that, in regards to long-term mental health care, we definitely need more of that in the Omaha community, though long-term care is a function and responsibility of state government where we take charge of acute care at our community mental health center. And one would hope there's a nice continuum of care. Obviously, there's gaps in that continuum, especially when one has to jump to the long-term care level of care. On top of that, in regards to caps, while we are not too fond, or many of us are not too fond of the new legislation that came out of the special session, including the zero percent caps, they did have some exemptions from those caps. And one of those exemptions is corrections and detention of individuals. So anything related to corrections, including the medical and mental health care of people currently in jail, will be exempt from those caps. So just a few tidbits to add to the conversation. Commissioner Kavanaugh, and this is a third round, two-minute round?
Just relative to a couple of the points made. The kids' jail sits empty, except for air conditioning, lights, heat, and water. Across the street, $27 million investment that helped no kids. And it is a secure facility, which is what is proposed to be built here on the Corrections Campus for people with mental health problems. The bond issue can and often has been altered to allow for an alternative use. Certainly, the city would have no objection to turning an empty building into a building that has actual use for the taxpayers. The long-term care facilities, which are available to Douglas County residents on 42nd Street with physical disabilities, could easily be expanded with these savings to provide long-term care for Douglas County residents with mental health disabilities. We can shrug it off to the state. The state's never going to address this. Either we do it or it doesn't get done. The acute care can certainly be handled, although it's not mandated for us to provide this acute care to inmates at the Douglas County Correctional Center. And I'd hate to have it be that in order to get acute care on a 30, 60, 90-day basis in Douglas County, all you have to do is get arrested. I think acute care should be provided for our resident citizens who aren't arrested, at least on an equal basis. The caps exempt duties relative to inmate detention. That's jail. And if we're going to use the cap exemption under state law, we're gonna violate the federal law prohibition against expanding jails in ARPA. You can have it one way or the other. You cannot have it both ways. So in order to avoid the potential of a $30 million clawback, doing an inadequate job for people who are incarcerated in the same block virtually as we have an empty newly constructed building, just, I'm sorry, does not add up, does not make budgetary sense. And if we do, in the worst-case scenario, as attorneys have pointed out here, suffer a clawback, that's gonna be compounded by a $30 million Douglas County taxpayer payback to the federal government. This could result easily in a property tax increase and we could compound the damage done by the record property tax increase that was used to build the empty kids' jail. We just need to pause here and reflect on the best alternatives. And one of the best alternatives certainly is an empty, secure building a block away from this proposed jail expansion that has all kinds of legal problems. If we pause, we don't jeopardize anything. If we pause and decide to go forward, so be it. I respect my colleagues' opinions on this. We just happen to differ. And I'm basing my difference on the recent fiasco employing many of these same techniques at the kids' jail. Again, let's do the right thing here. And the right thing is to do the best we can with the resources that we have to address the problem that faces us. And we cannot use ARPA resources to expand the jail. We should not use any resources
Ten seconds.
to incarcerate mentally ill people if we can avoid it. Let's do the alternative of utilizing a facility that we've already got built and is vacant and is unusable for its stated purpose.
That's time.
And it takes not a lot of hard work to make that happen. But let's do the right thing. It's better, cheaper, and
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been on this board almost four years now and we, we're still talking about the Juvenile Justice Center. That's okay. Mistake or not mistake, we have an asset downtown that's empty and I think that there's plenty of discussion going on, not just, you know, among county officials and county people who are interested in county business, but with the state of Nebraska and other folks. The downtown facility, the asset, is going to be used for youth rehabilitation. Question is, how's it gonna be funded? Who's gonna be fiscally responsible? Who's gonna manage the place? There's all kinds of issues there. But the funny thing is, for the last four years, been listening to this, mistake or not, seven years ago, more or less, this was done and we're still crying about a detention center downtown. We need to solve it. It reminds me, for Civil War buffs, it reminds me of General Dan Sickles arguing over what General Mead did at Gettysburg seven years after the fact. And Mead was too nice to come out and argue with the guy and it just looked like Mead was a boob. The Union won the Battle of Gettysburg, no matter what Sickles did. That's what happened. We have to solve a problem. We're gonna solve it. Solving this problem by delaying and obfuscating and copying attitudes, legal attitudes that have not been verified either way, about a facility that we're going to put into effect downtown, there are specious arguments. So to me, I laid out earlier why I thought that this was decent implementation for the taxpayer. And further, the funny thing about ARPA money is that, just keep this in mind. The federal government gave it all to the states. State could have rejected it. State of Nebraska could have said, "No, we don't want your ARPA money." Once the state of Nebraska got the ARPA money, they distributed to every jurisdiction around the state of Nebraska that, you know, that they thought needed it. Could we have at that time said, "No, we don't want any of that ARPA money"? I think arguably. Here's the funny thing. You kick it back to the state and the state says, "Nobody wants this ARPA money." The state kicks it back to the feds. You know what the feds are gonna do with it? They're not giving it back to the taxpayer. They are giving it to Detroit. They're giving it to Dallas. They're giving it to Atlanta. This money is going to be spent. Everybody that talks about all, this grandiose idea, and I agree that it's our money, I was never gonna see that again. Once the feds and once the Treasury made that determination, ARPA was gonna be spent, it was gonna be spent. Nothing you can do about it. So Nebraska could have taken the high road and sent the money back. It wasn't coming back to us. It wasn't coming back to Roger. It wasn't coming back to Jim. It wasn't coming back to me and my income tax. It was going to a different jurisdiction. Can we talk about reality now? We have to do what's responsible. We have to do what's right. And what the pandemic actually caused was a pandemic of healthcare issues that we can't get our hands around. What we have an opportunity now is to do clinical work in an environment that's secure and to do it the right way. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Borgson.
I just wanted to make one. I just wanted to make one clarification that it's not us. We're not the ones incarcerating the mentally ill. These individuals are coming to us. By law, we hold them, based on state law, in our facility and they're coming to us with mental illness and behavioral health issues for us to address. And we are trying to find, again, a way And we are trying to find, again, a way for us to be able to serve these individuals that, again, have been brought to us. We're not going out rounding them up. We're not saying, "Hey, all the people with mental illness come to our jail." They're coming to us. They're brought in. They have mental illness, and it is up to us to address the care that is given to these individuals. And I needed to make that because, again, it's, we're in a weird predicament as county government. We're a creature of the state. They tell us what to do. And, again, holding individuals with mental illness, we could just let them sit there. We could put them in the medical mod, and we could let them sit there without any treatment, any services. We definitely could do that. But we're trying to find a way to better serve the individuals, again, who are brought to us and some with very serious mental illness. And they do not, no one, again, deserves to be sitting in a jail without the treatment of their mental illness. And so, this mental health facility that will serve those that are incarcerated, I think, will serve the public well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgson. I'll just echo those sentiments. I mean, we've voted on this project throughout various stages, including the CM@RIS, which was a few months ago. We're really just voting on the construction company today because the board has already found the consensus to move this project forward. But while we're on the higher-end philosophy of the overall project, I'll just echo that and say that we're trying to do our small part in breaking the cycle that many people find themselves in between jail and local incarceration, between homeless shelters and hospital emergency rooms. Many people find themselves stuck in those cycles, between those three. And our little part is local jail corrections. And the fact that we see 50% of our inmates diagnosed with some kind of mental illness that screams to me that there's some kind of crisis going on in our local community, that 50% of our inmates have some kind of mental health diagnosis, that's a huge number. And it's not getting smaller. It's only been growing. And so, we're trying to do our piece of the pie to truly treat them while they're in our care, provide them with better mental health services, better acute services, better therapeutic environments to truly treat them well when it comes to mental health while they're in our care. Yes, I know that some of them are only in there for a month. Some of them are in there for a full year, you know, and everything in between. But again, while they're in our care, we're trying to do our best to truly care for them, especially when it comes to their mental illness, which 50% of them have. So, I would just echo the sentiments shared by some of my colleagues and complete my round there of speaking. Is there any other comments on this item before we vote on the consent agenda, including H?
Very brief.
Larry, you had a round already, my friend. You already had a round, Larry. I'm sorry, but you had a round already.
Point of reference, I guess, is the question.
Well, we're going to go to G next, which I think you want to speak on.
Please have a discussion about what you're going to do with all the illegals that are coming.
Okay. Yeah, not at all relevant. Okay. We'll move forward. Jeff, did you have a comment on H?
I don't have the agenda in front of me, but it's a contract for McCarthy.
Yes. Go for it.
Jeff McGill, Douglas County Public Properties. In that contract, it talks about insurance and bonds as an exhibit. They're typically not provided until the contract's signed. So, I believe it's within 10 days, we'll receive those bonds and label it Exhibit B. That's for the record.
Thank you. We'll move to vote. Again, we're voting on consent agenda, including H, but minus G.
Mr. Chair, just before you vote, I just wanted to note on item S, just want to make it clear. So, there's nothing we need to amend because the resolution, all the backups submitted is correct. But on the agenda, special designated liquor license is what it is. That got cut off on the agenda, but I just wanted to make sure people were aware. It's for, basically, an event that Madonna's putting on, and plenty of organizations apply for SDLs in those situations. But this is not for, like, a regular, full-blown liquor license for them. That'd be a different process. But it's an SDL for an event they're having.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Point of clarification, Mr. Chair. Could we vote separately on H? Obviously, I'm opposed to that, but I'm not voting against all of the consent agenda items. It's just a separate vote.
Yeah.
Like G. Like G's going to be a separate vote.
That should be fine, if the board's okay with that. All right. We'll take G and H separately. For future reference, let's make sure we say that up front, and we'll just pull it out up front.
Sure.
Perfect. All right. So, consent agenda, minus G and H. We'll vote on that. We did have one already. Yep.
Okay. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. With that, let me put H up front for a vote first before G, just since we were on the topic already. And we'll vote on that one separately.
Give me one moment, please.
Much better approved by Borgson. Second by Boyle, and now we can vote.
One moment, please, Commissioners. And then for item H, that was a motion by Borgson, second by Boyle?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes five to one. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, all other Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to G, which is the approval of contract with Charles Drew Health Center to provide the needed mental/behavioral services for the Douglas County Youth Center Behavioral Health Initiative. Commissioner Rogers pulled it out. Would you like to say a comment?
Anything because I sit on the board.
Got it. Anything else on this item? Otherwise, we can vote. We'll vote. Oh, yeah. Motion approved by Boyle. Second by Friend. Yeah, clarification or?
Can I ask a real quick question about Evals?
Yes, that is one portion of it. They also meet every other week from a multidisciplinary team. This is with UNMC Department of Psychiatry, CHI. It is for that. So, yes, it is a portion of it, but then they also are doing treatment plans for youth in detention.
And if there's a way to provide us with some data in terms of, because I think when we first started this, those Evals were getting done in a little bit better timely manner than they are now. And I think maybe we need to revisit some of that if we're starting to see kids sitting there waiting for those Evals longer than what they had been. So, if we could maybe look at that and then have a discussion at a later date about it.
Sure, Commissioner. And the only thing I would stress is we need to tell the difference between a psychiatric eval and a psychological eval, because these are for psychiatric evals, and I can get you that date, time, period on those.
And you might as well just get both while you're, even though it's a separate-
Sure.
...thing.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I just missed the vote on that last one.
We're going to have to opt to restart the vote on that. I had to stop in order for Commissioner Borgson's mic to work.
I see. Okay.
We'll recast our votes on this item again right now. Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers abstaining. All other Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. That completes consent agenda. We'll now move forward to Section 5, Public Hearings. We do have A and B. A being the public hearing to consider a proposed golf car ordinance.
Oh, did I miss?
Yes, except... Oh, there we go. Yeah, my apologies. Thank you. Good catch. Proclamations and recognitions. Let me go back to Section 3. My mistake. Item A, recognition of the fallen county employee. I don't believe Mr. Arthur Cooks is here today, but we do want to acknowledge his 37 years of service to Douglas County through the Douglas County Department of Corrections. So, many thanks to Arthur Cooks for his service. 37 years is a long time. And with that, we'll take a motion, second for that.
Second.
Motion by Borgson, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Presentation before public hearing. So, item, Section 4A, we have one presentation, Metro Omaha Raised Me to Read, presentation by Kathleen Knudsen, as requested by Commissioner Borgson. So, I will toss it to Commissioner Borgson.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Kathleen, for being here today. This was, she sent an email out talking about the organization, and I actually had not heard of the organization and was very interested because I usually go when it's time to read to the kiddos at various locations. And again, I have a big passion for kids learning to read because if they can't read, we all know what the pitfalls are for that. And so, I asked Kathleen to come and just give a short presentation on what the organization was about so that we would know. And, again, just very interested in what you all do. So, welcome.
So, again, my name is Kathleen McCardle-Knudsen. I live at 21510 Honeysuckle Drive in Elkhorn. I am the facilitator for Metro Omaha Raised Me to Read, and I thank you, Commissioner Borgson, for inviting me. I am a sixth-generation Nebraskan. I grew up in Valley, Nebraska, and now live in Elkhorn. My teaching experiences include English and research writing, music and liturgy, and building a high-ability program in math and English out in my home school in Valley. My last round of education was serving as a school administrator at Carter Lake Elementary. My roles included security, safety, culture, and climate. I was the first responder for parents and children and led the attendance and behavior teams. I also, part of my role was being connected with the community. The Carter Lake Police Force is amazing, and their youth center there is fantastic, too. So, that was my role before I came to Raised Me to Read. And the scope of Raised Me to Read work includes an early preschool readiness, attendance, and out-of-school learning. We want to focus on that early, consistent adult and child interaction. We know that when schools and organizations work together and help barriers that parents are experiencing to getting their children to school, that we're going to have school success for children and those who have life at stake in their schooling. We also want to notice out-of-school learning. We know that 80% of a child's awake time is not in school. It doesn't seem like that when you're going out of teacher or parent in the school day, but 80% of that time is not in the school learning. And so, we need to think as a community about what can we do in our communities so that we foster learning throughout our communities. Metro Omaha Raised Me to Read is a collective impact initiative. We, the backbone, is Metropolitan Omaha Educational Consortium. We are also financed by United Way of Midland and the Women's Community of the South. We are a member of the Campaign for Grade Level Reading that, your focus is parents of the secret thoughts, learning literacy, being at grade level and reading by third attendance, and again, that out-of-school time adds really meaning to learning-based spaces. You have to create a community solutions action plan to be part of the Campaign for Grade Level Reading, and that's on our website at raisedmetoread.org. You have to describe your entire city, history of the city, and then notice the things in these realms that need to be addressed. I worked with ESU when I first came to this position to get all of my thoughts about what we need to discuss with Raised Me to Read into an image. And they created a circle of influence image, and it describes family and children and schools and churches and clubs and organizations and friends that surround them because it's all of that that needs to happen in conjunction in relation to each other so that family and children thrive. We have a really good video on our website, and it's in this slide deck, but I'm going to stick it past if you turn this thing on. But that will just add a little bit further our thoughts and organizing to this work. Just a few projects I'll mention. You may recognize the other one, Family, that was a thing called Read for the Record, and this is a national thing that happens. And we did a project in conjunction with Council of the U.S. Raised Me to Read, and it is families and civic leaders reading this book. And our wonderful MABR PR at UNO filmed these readings. They did it in Spanish for us. And so, we filmed officials from both Council of the U.S. and Omaha reading the book, and then MABR PR did each page turn and changed to different readers. And that's on our website, too, but it turned out to be a really good project. And we think it's a good thing part of that. On the upper center, we have bookmarks that we allow and send proof to anybody that wants to borrow it, use it, reprint it with their logo, and use it. And this idea is to elevate the importance of parents in the learning lives of their children and just remind them, you just need to see and talk, read, draw, explore with your child, and that's going to be enough to have them ready for school. And that's an important fact that schools and myself being part of them, we keep saying, yes, we can do that, and yes, we can do that, and we can do it all. And so, those, they were so valuable, the most important things. And so, we have these cards that several organizations that use in our community. Another thing we did was a book study with a book called Reader Comes Home: The Reading Brain in the Visual World. If you are a reader, you need to read this book. Mary Ann Wolf has done extensive research, and she, each chapter is very consumable. It's a reader. And it's describing how your brain works when it's reading. It's describing what happens with the difference between reading on a screen and reading with real paper. And as an English teacher, of course, I'm more in favor of one than the other. But one of the things that they noticed is our brains are wired to look at a screen differently, to scan a screen in sort of a Z motion. And we don't do that when we read stories or when we read articles. And so, that's concerning to people who study literacy because we, part of literacy is walking in other people's shoes. And if you're skipping through the story, then you might not know all those issues. This has come, the next thing that I want to mention is that we do screen resilience for free, and I help whoever it is that is screening it come up with questions and answers and next steps after they've seen the movie. This is really important to me. I learned at Carter Lake with upper 90% of poverty and generational trauma that we need a better way to respond to students in school. And so, our team went to trauma-informed trainings, and the difference between reacting to something that keeps happening and responding to it, understanding what's happening with that child in that moment, made a big difference in how we could respond and help our kids at Carter Lake. It feeds right into the conversation you're having about mental health, too, in our city and our county. In the middle, on the bottom, I have worked with Service Learning Academy at UNO. That connects students in their regular coursework to outside agencies and to, or to schools, elementary schools or high schools. And I have worked with students, nine out of 10 of the semesters that I've been there. And this is an example of a graphic design. Our chancellor says that the majority of students who graduate from UNO stay in the city. And so, my, first of all, it's nice to be teaching with kids, again. But my goal here is to train up a whole, you know, every semester it's been about 100 students that I've had, is train future citizens in understanding early literacy, in understanding the importance of urban development, and the things that we're doing in our city. And so, that's been a really good get for us in that they're going out into the community. They already understand- that they're going out into the community, they already understand this issue. Last, which is how I was connected with Commissioner Borgerson, is the Be Present, Be Powerful Attendance Awareness Campaign. A group called the Attendance Coalition sends to schools and to our members a social media calendar that says that's for twenty days and gives people things to post about attendance as we're coming into the school year. Attendance Awareness is typically countrywide in September. Here we start so early that we do that in late July and August. But I thought to send it to others in the community that could put it in their church bulletins, in other sort of newsletters that come out. Those same messaging can go out throughout our community. So with regard to attendance, the Raise Me to Read supports the community-based Attendance Coalition. And on our slide, we have the people, the organizations, the organizations that are connected to the people that are on our leadership team. You see a mix of schools and agencies here. This group was originally gathered by retired Judge Elizabeth Circovich in 2012. Raise Me to Read just helped set the agenda. We usually meet on campus. And, and we, the purpose is to gather and learn more about how we can help our students in school to come to school. We also, I also listed some subjects that we've studied over the last few years. There are one hundred and thirty-nine members from thirty-five entities in the coalition. And we, I see Kim here today, and we are assisted by Douglas County Juvenile Justice with Deb Faga helping us in sending our information out, in doing the, setting the agendas. And I love this group. They come together asking to learn more about what they already so wonderfully do. We worked to write our, write down our purpose and strategy. We've just been meeting for years and years, and we tried to match the system's structure for Douglas County Juvenile Justice. So we, our leadership team worked to create those things. Again, we're collaborating, we're providing meaningful trainings. With regard to early literacy, our major project is Omaha Urban Thinkscapes. This is our logo. The best way to describe this is from Ralph Smith, the leader of the Campaign for Grade Level Reading. He says that children are hardwired for learning, and the question is, are we prepared to enable, encourage, and expand the opportunity for learning? That's the challenge that this movement is taking on by creating a notion that there are places and spaces where community happens. And in those places and spaces, we have this opportunity to promote a vastly enriched and expanded notion of learning. Our core team includes Stephen Ellsberg, formerly with the Chamber of Commerce and Urban Development. He's now at PGSA. On the right, Dr. Deborah Wisneski, who is a teacher at education at the College of Ed at UNO, and she is an internationally recognized expert in play. We also have Christina Stamatys, a professor at UNO also, and her expertise is in community engagement and writing and storytelling from the community upward and outward. Last, Jeff Spees from Lamprey Nielsen. Jeff is the one I kept bugging at MAPPA meetings and saying, surely somebody might be interested in a project like Thinkscapes. And he introduced me to Stephen and Deborah. During the pandemic, Stephen, Deborah, and I met with community leaders to discern their interest in a project such as this. I know it's small type, but when you review it, you'll see that we've developed relationships with artists, elected and appointed officials, advocates for playful learning, STEM, mental health, and natural resources, project and landscape designers, community planners, and resource conservationists, and museum and research educational leaders. Every, every person we met with enthusiastically said, yes, we need to be part of this. A quick review of just some Thinkscape work that is occurring. On the upper left is Philadelphia Urban Thinkscapes. We're very connected with this group. Dr. Sarah Lidle, that leads the Playful Learning Landscapes Action Network, and Dr. Kathy Hirsch-Pasek, who does a ton of research in this area. They did this project. And you can see a kiddo is playing on equipment, but that equipment has lines for you to choose to go left or right, forward or backward. It also isn't uneven. That is using cross-brain thinking to do those kind of activities. There's also a 3D puzzle. This area was, this is a bus stop. It looks bigger than it is. It's a bus stop where parents and children are already going to be, and then they can play and interact with each other there. To the right, in the collage of pictures, this is in Tel Aviv, and they were, you can see how dense the population is around this parking lot. And they were trying to find space to build a park, some sort of an area, and they were unable to do that. But they came with the, up with the idea about pop-up shelters, and they close and lock up and go off to the side during, during, they're during the work week when cars park here. And then during the weekend, you can see here that families are in sandboxes, using manipulatives, pulling out trags for kids. They've, this has been really effective in their area, and there's been never any destruction of the property. Everybody in the area owns it, owns it in a way that they know it's important. Another way to think of Thinkscapes isn't a place, but it's signage to just encourage parents to talk about things with, when they're with their children. So this is a thing called Supermarket Speak, and it is just saying, let's look, let's talk about the colors and the protocile. And you can do that with shapes and anything that goes that you see during, during your trip through the, through the grocery store. Last, on the left, an example, which is usually a favorite, is a fraction basketball court. So they took a regular basketball court on a school playground, and they overlaid it with measurements on the side and fractions. And as you may imagine, the students who tested and learned about fractions and measurements the year before this was there did fine. The students who had this just in regular play, the teachers aren't out coaching them, telling them that this is a half or a quarter. But the kids, now they're living this, this measurement and understanding fractions in a different way. And of course, their understanding of that and their ease at learning, it's really, fractions freak out students. So it's really hard, and it's much easier because they're playing on it. Some things that we're doing in our work thus far, we had planning date, family plan dates at the Learning Community Centers in North and South Omaha. We had an artist charrette at the Union for Contemporary Arts. Again, we've used service learning students, and we've also had pre-teaching service students work with us in our play dates at these spaces and places. We ask parents what they want for their children. They know how their children learn. They describe beautifully what they want in play areas for them and the whole family to go. We have been partners with Canopy South, RDG Design and Latino Economic Development Center for Plaza de la Rosa's project. The, we participated with letters of support for the ARPA process. I testified at the Nebraska Legislature in support of this project. This image is an earlier design from RDG Design and Planning. It's changed just a bit, but the same colorful shapes and using the land to best effect is there. You can see a playground there, Playful Learning Landscapes Action Network, and our own Deborah Wisneski will be helping design that. It's going to be playful, but there'll also be some of those learning, those learning pieces in. And then throughout the plaza, we're going to have embedded markers that indicate that here's a learning opportunity, and use QR codes for further learning to take away or to talk about right there. LEDC is really, really pressing cradle to career. And so while, while our work is about the young, we will also include, this is a job that you can have, and these are the classes that you might take if you want to do this aspect or another, depending on what's happening on, at the plaza in that time. We are also worked just recently with Spark CDI in a grant submission for a place based at Ernie Chambers Court, and future work possibly along the North Omaha Trail. Last, our place ecosystem suite is in development. This is a toolkit so that we're not the arbiters of this. We've just partnered and gathered people together, and anyone can do this kind of work in building learning-enhanced environments. Just a quick aside, I was selected for the Policy Leadership Academy at first five last year, and we have to do a capstone project. So I took all of the work that I've been doing with Raise Me to Read and a National League of Cities group here in Omaha, and I just synchronized that into a plan so that we're thinking about early literacy messaging and exploring the ways in which the city, which is going to be reviewing its master plan, hoping that we're at the table for that, and then integrating best practice and research-supported learning environments. Last, this is a quote from the Bernard Van Lier Foundation. They have a project called Urban Ninety-Five, so looking at the world from the eyes of a two-year-old. And they say, if you change the beginning of the story, you change the end of the story. And that's our goal, is that if we can focus as a community on early literacy and coming to school, showing up in all areas, then we will make a difference at the end of a child's lifecycle. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to toss it to Commissioner Borgerson.
I mean, this is, again, that's pretty cool stuff. And we know, you know, kids who can't read don't want to go to school.
Right.
And when they don't go to school, we know that they're out there getting in trouble. And so any little bit that we can do to, again, at a very young age, be able to make a difference, that's so important because we see so many children now that are just kind of passed through the system who can't read. And again, you know, we end up dealing with a lot of what their actions have gotten them into trouble with through our juvenile system. And so it's, this is really, really important. Do you work with the, voice advocacy with dyslexia at all?
There's a, voice advocacy is part of my, of Raise Me to Read's board, and I think they come to our, also our coalition meetings, the attendance coalition. So she's, we, they're on the Raise Me to Read board advising and that. Also, MOEC, that's not what I'm here to talk about, but MOEC, who is our backbone, they have done some training from Iowa Reading Research Center for teachers in this, in Douglas, Anthropy County for dyslexia training. Dr. Deborah Reed created this very wonderful way of being. And several of our, I know, I know Omaha and Millard have both used those, those tutorials for staff and training staff in dyslexia.
So how does somebody, like, are they referred to you, or do you just go look for partnerships, or?
Mostly, I've been working in the community, developing partnerships, yes. I don't, I can't think of anybody that's been referred to us. We've made new connections as, as it's grown. So it's, we're in the year six of this project. So we continue to make new connections. And we know that, like, there are others in this field, and we try to connect with those on a regular basis. The Wellbeing Partners are one group. Of course, we're connected to the learning community through using their centers and things like that. Back to your, your, your statement about attendance, we can trace kindergarten attendance to whether a student graduates in high school or not. So it's very important to catch it young. And it doesn't have to be the, you know, I mean, I had to go to court for, for some of our students at Carter Lake. It's not to be the punitive, but it's to say, we like to show up. Don't we like to show up? And the more we talk about just that concept in the community, the more it will just become sort of normal behavior. Of course, you show up.
I especially like the basketball court with the fractions. That's, that's pretty cool.
It is very cool.
But again, thank you.
Thanks for having me.
For being here and, and sharing so much about your organization. Very impressive. Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Chair, Ms. Knudsen, thanks for the work you're doing. And with the ESU, the ESU value add, you may have addressed a little bit of this that I glazed over, but have the schools been open to the practical approach? I mean, some of the things that you've been, or is this a work in progress, the schools in the metro?
Tell me what you mean by practical.
Well, are the, there, every school carries a large bureaucracy. So, I mean, is it, is it hard to, the majority of the, of the youth that you're trying to help are being helped in different ways by OPS, Millard, Bennington, the Valley School District, stuff like that? Are they open to the relationship that you're trying to build with them? I mean, is it, does the ESU help in that matter?
I have not used, I've used ESU in different ways for more of the technological stuff. ESU is part of MOEC's executive group, I believe. And so, and we have early literacy group with, with MOEC. We have other organizations there. The schools are very welcoming within whatever that school rule is to the people from the Attendance Coalition. So like Urban League is in the schools. Child Saving Institute helps with schools. So for having outside actors help and support them with regard to attendance and literacy, I think the schools are very open to it. The Literacy Work Group that works with MOEC is, is always trying to find best ways, best practices. So yes, I think.
I guess that was the reason I asked the question. I mean, sometime, and not that the schools would intentionally do that, but I mean, sometimes there are roadblocks and things that you have to weave your way through. Did you, did you teach, or were you an administrator at DC West for any period of time?
No, no.
Okay, so you don't know my daughter. That's good. Never mind. That's it. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Good to know.
All right. If nothing else, then thank you so much for being here for the presentation. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, now we'll jump into public hearings. Five A, the first one being a public hearing to consider a proposed golf car ordinance to allow golf cars to be driven within SID 506 Quail Run Valley in Douglas County. So with that, I will now open the public hearing for this item. Is there any comments or questions from board or the public? If not, I will, first let me close the public hearing and give a quick context note there, Commissioner Friend. We, the statute would have us typically do three readings of this item. I've been advised that if we would like to, we could suspend the three readings first as the first motion, and then the second motion could be to approve it today. So, yes, Commissioner Rogers. The three readings, yep. Very good. So motion by Rogers to suspend the three readings required by statute, second by Friend. We'll vote on that first.
And this is one of those items where we have to do a voice vote. So I'm going to do that, and I'll, I'll announce your vote as well. So Commissioner Borgerson. Commissioner Borgerson voting yes. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Boyle voting yes. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting yes. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Friend voting yes. Commissioner Morgan is absent. Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Rogers voting yes. And Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia voting yes. Motion passes six to zero.
Just for the record, the, yeah, the ordinance we're considering for this public hearing is the SID 506 of Douglas County, Nebraska, Quail Run Valley Golf Car Ordinance, which at this point, we can vote to approve today. Motion approved by Friend, second by Borgerson. Please vote.
Commissioner Borgerson. Commissioner Borgerson voting yes. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Boyle voting yes. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting yes. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Friend voting yes. Commissioner Morgan is absent. Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Rogers voting yes. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia voting yes. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. That concludes item A. We also have item B. We have our director Todd Fitzer, or excuse me, county engineer Todd Fitzer opens for comment for the hearing on the county's highway improvement plan fiscal year 2025 to 2030. It is under open, or excuse me, under public hearing. So I should now open the public hearing and toss it to our county engineer.
All right, Todd Fitzer, 15505 West Maple Road. I was told brevity would be graded here. So Dan, do you want to join me up here and do some, some commentary, or you? I'm going to leave, I'll leave that up to you. So as you guys know, we present our one and six-year plan every year. The next year, our projects that have been designed, in some cases are actually, have been bid, and we have scheduled or are prepared and ready to be bid and have scheduled. Beyond that, it's the best idea we have of where things are needed. We use a number of criteria to evaluate these projects. We look at, at the needs of the growth in the community, the, the safety issues, volumes, condition of pavement, different things like that. I have spoken with Mike and Mary Ann many times about projects because they're happening in, in the districts that you represent. So we just put together a brief slideshow to show you the projects that are coming up. This is in, in the next year, the yellow projects and the, and the red lines, just to give you some idea how they're kind of spread out. No big surprise, they're in the north and west part of the county primarily. We do have a couple down in the southwest part of the county as well. You will have access to this information. It's on our webpage, and it'll be posted, and you can go through and look in detail and, and ask any questions. Want to give you an idea of some projects that we did this year, so you know what these projects look like. This is looking north near 120th and State about a year ago. This is what it looks like. South of State, and look at the differences here as, as it, as it was built. And look at the differences here as, as it was built. I mean, just a year ago, and this is out near the Google site. And you can go out there today and see the connections that are in place. 216th and Mount Michael, we wanted to show you what's going on out there. Wanted to show you that when we come in and make these improvements and put in the infrastructure that's needed and do those things, that we still maintain the access. And so people can get through there, and they're not having to detour out of their way and do things like that. But you can see the changes that are happening just in a year on a couple of these projects. This is what northwest Douglas County is, what's happening. You guys know we've had a few weather events this year. And it's been a challenge, but we've managed to keep moving. This is the, what is now a roundabout, so this is what it looked like in March. This is what it looks like today. Well, it's even better than this today. We've got the connections. If you blinked, you missed it. But I can go back, and this is the time lapse and what it looks like today out there. You can actually drive on this roundabout now. So it's slowing traffic on Q Street, providing pavement on 222nd Street. It's making those connections and serving those neighborhoods. So, I was told brevity would be appreciated. That's in a nutshell what we're doing. And as you guys know, in the last six months, we've had a blizzard and two floods and two windstorms and a tornado. So we are out there cleaning up our roads as we speak. And probably are a month away from our roadside cleanup being considered complete. That has taken its toll. We don't have all of our grading and our ditch services and all those things done that we'd like to have done this time of year going into fall. And I know you don't want to hear it, but I always say, good snow prep starts in August. And if you come into our yard right now, you will see snowplow stuff all over the place because it takes months to go through and troubleshoot and make sure that everything's in place. And so we are starting to think about that for snowfall, believe it or not. So with that, I guess, I want to thank Dan Kudle, Dan did the lion's share of work on this. And I'm so pleased that Dan is still with us and giving me the benefit of all his years of experience. And with that, if you guys have any questions or comments you'd like to make, that's why we're here.
Perfect, thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Borgeson.
It's a dynamic duo.
Did you hear that?
Thank you for this. On that map, where you had the circles? So the, did you say the yellow or the, what are the green then? If the yellow are the ones coming up, are the green in progress? Or does that not mean anything?
The green are the county projects? So if you look down at the bottom, where the green, where the key is there, those are projects that we're working on, kind of alone. The agreement, the yellow are the agreements with developers. As you know, when developments, SIDs come in, they pay, usually, rule of thumb is, they pay a third on each side of the road, and we pay a third, and that's how projects get done. So all of the yellows represent SIDs that are being worked with to make improvements.
Thanks.
And just at a high level, I'll take a quick round. For those who may not know, what does the county engineer's office in regards to roads, road improvement, snow removal, stuff like that, at a high level, which are the ones that we take care of, that are our responsibility? And then what is not our responsibility within Douglas County?
Well, the best, I would suggest, if you can look at this map, the light gray, so the southeast part is City of Omaha. So once the City of Omaha annexes an area, it's theirs. And they take care of it, maintain it, make any improvements. The state does the state highway system within Douglas County. They do a lot of that. And then we do everything else. So everything that's not shaded in gray there, Ponca Hills, northwest Douglas County, all the way out to Waterloo Valley, all that, that's all us.
So we also do the smaller cities and towns, like Waterloo Valley and?
Not within those towns, but all of the surrounding.
Surrounding.
Roads and things leading to those communities, yes.
Got it. So, just one of many examples of where Douglas County funding goes towards. And which is obviously an important service when you want to get your snow removal done in your roads, et cetera.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rogers?
You all, tell me, I'm just looking at, I might have been giving out the wrong number to somebody when they were telling me. Can you give me approximate number? What's the percentage, what percentage, from looking at this? Do you have an official number of the percentage that Omaha makes of Douglas County? What's Omaha percentage, what's Omaha's percentage of Douglas County?
Well, are you, are you talking about population or geographic area or lane miles or what?
I think, population, I know, but give me, give me both officially, so I make sure I'm right.
I don't have all those. I was just trying to clarify. No, I, I would have to get back to you if you want.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Very specific. I know the City of Omaha, from my previous life, maintains over 6,000 lane miles of roads. And we're not even close to that. We're in the hundreds, four or 500 lane miles of roads, Douglas County.
Yeah, I'm just curious, no rush. But if somebody, if you all get it, I appreciate it.
Sure. What specifically, are you looking for lane miles or geographic area?
Geographic landmass.
Okay, sure.
Population, I think it may be, you know, I thought it may be 70% or something.
Unless Dan happens to know off the top of his head.
We looked this up recently, didn't we?
Well, we were looking up, to let you know some of the things we enjoy looking at. We were looking up, if you put the island of Manhattan, we were talking about the services provided by a major metropolitan area. So the population and landmass area of Manhattan. And it is one, about one-sixth the size of Omaha, but it has more population than we have in our whole state in that area. So it's very interesting to think about the differences that we have in the Midwest. But certainly, I can get that, Commissioner.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, did you want Dan to just say who he was?
Yes, I know you didn't speak much, but. Yeah, if you just say it.
I don't want to speak out of place with the boss standing right next to me. My name is Dan Kudle, I'm the engineering manager.
Thank you, Dan, appreciate it. Yeah, I'd be curious on that number two, that Commissioner Rogers was asking about, geographically speaking, because I, I've heard the number 80 or 82% tossed out as far as geographic portion of Douglas County. But from this map, it doesn't quite look like 82%, it looks like less. But we'll take an official number if somebody has one. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks again, you guys. I, I always, I utilize this one to six-year plan quite often. I think you know that. And then, of course, I send Todd emails and on a pretty consistent basis. Can you, part of the, a lot of the dialogue that ends up coming in, when you, when you put one to six-year plan together, does the, does the, does the growth of that asphalt follow development, on a pretty consistent basis, follow SID development? And also legacy homes, regency, celebrity, wherever they're doing a bunch of work, then you guys are like, Dan's in the background going, oh, whoa, there you go. It's happening right there. Does the, does the growth follow those developments pretty consistently? Or is it the other way around?
Well, you know, these projects take years to put together. And we have information on development and what is being planned down the road. So we start talking about that early on, of course. And we do follow the developers around. You know, they drive a big part of our budget as far as road improvements. And we're fortunate that, I would say, the attorneys and the fiscal people that work with all the developers in Omaha have been, you know, cooperative. You know, they try to do what they can fiscally for us because they understand, if they don't, we cannot get the roads improved in any kind of timeframe. And it causes issues for even getting people to move into neighborhoods. If the traffic is horrendous around a neighborhood, people won't buy a house out there. So, we're lucky in that regard. Our projects, which we don't want to overlook, are bridges. You know, a bridge goes down, that is a major obstruction for traffic. So we are fortunate in Douglas County. We've been very aggressive on replacing all of our bridges and keeping up with the functionally obsolete, structurally obsolete bridges. We have very few of them. Handful of them are left, and most of them are way out in the rural areas or dead end roads, that type of thing. The other thing we do, which is very important, is maintenance. You know, we do asphalt overlays every year, armor coats, we call them, panel repair, all of those types of things are critical. So, but the developers are what really drive our construction projects.
That, and this is a cute anecdote, but I was at a Notre Dame football game, probably 15 years ago. I've been to a few, but I was at a Notre Dame football game, and there was a dirt path, there was a new building, Mendoza Building of something. And there was a dirt path going right to the building. And I asked a guy, I go, why? He goes, well, they're just waiting. They're waiting to see where everybody walks, and then they're going to pave it. And I go, you, that's not true. And he goes, you know, it's very true. So, so the growth, development, stuff like that, it makes sense. I was going to ask you a question for a dichotomy purpose. When, when one of those, 168th and State, right, it gets done, you guys determine whether there's going to be traffic lights up there. Then the city synchronizes those lights, right? Later on?
That's correct, Commissioner. What we'll do is, we'll go out and collect data, and then we'll look at the warrants and the MUTCD and make a decision. And you and I spoke of one recently.
Right.
Schools. Dan talked about SIDs, and he's exactly right. But schools are also a major driver. And what comes first, the chicken or the egg? The SID or the school, you know, sometimes it varies. But that drives a lot of traffic and a lot of improvements. But yes, to answer your question, we go out, we do the count, we look at the warrants, and we work with the City of Omaha on implementing and coordinating those improvements.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm clarifying these things with people when I'm talking out of my ears. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend. Anything else on this item? All right, we are set to take action on this item on September 10th, 2024. Teresa, Teresa, do I keep the public hearing open until the 10th?
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. I think you can close it. I think the statute reads that you can take action after the public hearing.
Okay, very good. So, we'll close the public hearing at this moment. Thank you for that presentation. And when you say take action after the hearing, Teresa, you mean on the 10th or?
I think it is set for action on the 10th.
Okay.
I'm referring to the agenda request form, and it says the 10th.
Perfect, let's follow that plan then. Very good, thank you. With that, we'll go into committee discussion slash action. Section six, under Finance, we have a bunch of reports as presented. Nothing officially under Admin or Child Services. Just keep in mind, we have hearings, or not hearings, committee meetings coming up for Admin Services on September 3rd at 9:00 AM. And for Child and Youth Services on September 5th at 12:00 PM. You can see our website and social media for those meetings. We also have under Human Resources, weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. And one item, which is the approve, approval of renewal acceptance with Voya slash Reliester Financial Services for Basic Life and Accidental Death and Disenmemberment, Disability and Volunteer Life Insurance. Was there? Yeah, motion approved by Borgeson. Second by Boyle. Any additional comment on that item? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right. Brief note that we do not have a meeting next week on September 3rd in recognition of the Labor Day holiday. We do have a need today for executive session for the purpose of labor negotiations and personnel. Do I have a second? Or, excuse me, a motion and a second?
Commissioner, Patrick Bloomingdale County Administrator.
I think it's just litigation today. We don't have.
Just litigation? Okay, very good. Just litigation today. Motion and a second from anybody? Motion by Borgeson, second by Friend, to go into executive session. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
We will now go into executive session for the purpose of litigation.
They're.
Motion to reconvene by, adjourned by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Borgeson. Motion passes five to zero. Commissioners Kavanaugh and Morgan are absent. Were adjourned at 11:38 a.m.